Jeremy Lake, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roco.
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Daniel Deal. Debbie Esma.
Here.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Here.
John Pipinger.
Here.
Samantha Trenton here. And James Switty.
Here. Next is approval of reports of losses. Motion to approve. Got a motion by John, second by Samantha, any discussion? Roco.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Debbie Esma.
Yes.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
And John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton. Yes. And James Switty.
Yes. Next is approval of notaries. I believe we just had one, right?
She handed out another one. Was that just the only one?
It's the same one. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I skipped one. We got to do approval of reports of losses. Number two.
You skipped one, Greg.
That's right, I'm sorry. Approval of amendments of previous meeting.
Let them approve all of the approved amendments.
Motion by John, second by Samantha, any discussion on it? Roco.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal. Debbie Esma.
Yes.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton. Yes. And James Switty.
Yes. Sorry, I got a little ahead of myself. Number three is a now approval of notaries. I believe the only one we got is Hannah Price, is that right?
The only one, Kathy Adams.
Now, this is the couple that was in your packet. That was the only one I handed out tonight.
I didn't hand them my tags. Anybody got them?
Yes, Kathy Adams.
Oh, that's why I was asking, they're heavy. You just tell them their name.
Kathy Adams.
Who is it? No, Hannah.
That was just one.
So we got two total?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve Kathy Adams and Hannah Price notaries. John made the motion, Samantha second, any discussion? Roco.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Debbie Esma.
Yes.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton. Yes. And James Switty.
Yes. Next is budget amendments, and we have a pile of budget amendments. It gets this way every year close to the end of budget time. We use what we do when we got a long agenda, and we're going to try to keep it to our timeframe. We just approve them, and anybody wants a copy of them, anybody's weapon to them. But we have a pile of them. It takes thirty minutes to scold them off. But there, anybody wants one, we got happy to give you a copy.
There's no objection. I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Debbie to approve budget amendments as presented, any discussion? Roco.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Debbie Esma.
Yes.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton. Yes. And James Switty.
Yes. I can say that anybody wants a copy, they're right here, and y'all will thank me for not reading all of them, I promise. It was a pile of them. Uh, number five, ambulance service contract, Commissioner Peter.
I make the motion that we add the fourth ambulance indicated in the original bid from CareMed. The, uh, the original motion was made to take option three with the opening to go back and accept option one, which was the four ALS ambulances. I believe that the workload has been shown with ambulance service and the zero levels and one levels that we have hit are sufficient to say that we do not have enough service for the number of people and the landmass for the beginning. That takes it up from seven hundred twenty thousand to nine hundred.
Now, second motion.
Motion by John, second by Daniel. Any more discussion on ambulance contract?
I think before we vote on this, to increase it by a hundred and eighty thousand, not saying we don't need it, because I know we do. But how could we throw a hundred and eighty thousand on our taxpayers without knowing where it's going to come from? We don't even know if we're going to do a will tax, property tax increase. How can we sit there and do it not know where it's coming from?
If you do it now, you can eat it with the money that we do have.
Eat it with the extra budget, with the, um, extra loss of revenue that we have?
Actually, I was thinking fund balance, but, yeah, I mean, the.
I mean, we're at a loss of revenue. What are we going to do with that? Throw it on our taxpayers too, without knowing where it's coming from?
We know.
We know where it's coming from, but what are you going to do? You're going to throw fifty cent tax increase on them like you just said?
That's not what I said. I said what it would take is forty-two cent to do a two-dollar-and-eighteen-cent an hour raise, cover the five-year step plan, and cover the ambulance.
Without a loss of revenue.
If there's no increasing revenue. And I wasn't pushing for that, but I did make the statement because it's a true thing.
I know we need it, but I can't do that to everybody.
If you know we need it, we just got to figure out how to plug it.
Well, we don't have a budget laying in front of us to vote on.
That's true.
I'm sorry, I'm not doing it. I know I need it, we need it. We need it desperately, but we can't throw that on everybody and not know where it's coming from.
And I have no hard feelings with anybody, so, no.
Any more discussion?
Is this a permanent thing, or is this temporary?
It's two years.
It would be for the, if you adopt it. My understanding is, you know, that they have to have some surety in it that they can't just buy new ambulances extra and put on there or work one around without, you know, some assurance. So it would be for the remainder of the current contract, you're looking at two years. So you're looking at the, this is twenty, twenty-one, you're looking at the end in, through the end of this fiscal year and up to the expiration date in the next fiscal year. I don't remember what the start date was.
I have a question for the AMR representative. Y'all got down to level zero, would you care if AM, sorry, CareMed, if y'all got down to zero, would y'all care if AMR stepped in to help?
As long as it was requested, it's mutual aid. You know, that, that's all I'm saying right now.
We request mutual aid.
Ambulance is requesting mutual aid from each other.
When we go to level zero, dispatch, contacts up, starts contacting other counties to get us standby. And that's the way we've, we've been doing it, but they've turned us down numerous times.
AMR. Would y'all work with them if we got down to zero?
Yes.
And AMR has done, and we've done it for AMR. Did they turn you down because they didn't want to, or did they turn you down because they were at zero two?
Probably because they were at zero two, I'm guessing.
It would have been the, the level of staffing that we have, is the only reason we would turn someone down.
It's the same as Bradley.
Level two, only two ambulances in the county, then we usually don't respond to mutual aid.
And same with us, when, when mutual aid is requested by other counties from us, which happens sometimes, you know, if we can, we try to help because they help us, but we can't always.
Right.
Let me ask you this while we're on the subject there. What's roughly the percentage of convalescent calls that you get?
Convalescent, uh.
That and those that you have to take to the hospital from the home.
As far as, if it's going to the hospital, it's going to the ER, it's generally just a nine-one-one call. Uh, either from the nursing home, now we do two or three, sometimes two or three a week, uh, pre-scheduled, like from the nursing home or something that we take to doctor's office visits and stuff.
That's all, two or three a week?
Yeah.
There have been several questions come up right here at the end, and several points made I didn't know was going to be made. I mean, it's a pretty big deal. I believe everybody's mind says the same place. Would it be too much to table this for a month, and let's have one more ambulance committee meeting? There are several unknowns. You know, their contract does say exclusive.
Yes.
In the contract, we make them exclusive provider.
And that's for emergency and non-emergency?
Yep.
I think we need at least our attorney look at it, and any more questions come up. I can't make a motion, I'm just asking, would anybody like to make a motion?
We got a motion.
We got one now, we have to rescind it or amend it.
You told me a while back that staffing and timing was a, a pretty critical issue on, on doing the fourth right now, Chris. What, uh, can you kind of point that out to where everybody, I mean, you talk about on that, I don't want, I don't want to say because I, I mean, it'd be better for you. Make sure I understand it myself.
What?
On, on staffing and timing?
Yeah, oh, the, the people that we have that have applied, that have expressed interest in work, I mean, they're, they're not going to wait forever. You know, they're, they're going to go to some of these other companies, you know, these other counties, other services, you know, if they're wanting to work in EMS and get a job. So, right now, we have several that want to come and work here. You know, but they're, without being able to say, okay, you can start.
Well, would one, I guess, too, Chris, would one more month, you think, kill, kill that, make it or break it?
Probably not.
I mean, if, if this motion gets rescinded, I mean, I would truly like to get this put out really strong to the people and let everybody know what we're up against. Because this is such a tedious subject, and believe me, we get our throats cut either way we go with this. When we don't do it, or when we do it, we're doomed, because we're the bad guy. So, I would really like to get as much input as we can get. Now, I don't know if anybody else cares about it, but I'm big on that myself. I'm big on it because I, I want everybody that can let us know if they're willing to pay more money for a fourth ambulance, because you will be paying more money. That's a given. We can't sugarcoat that to make it sound any better.
Unless we cover it, unless we have the funds.
Yeah, unless the funds.
Well, that's something else we could look at and discuss too, and that's very good, Dave.
I'll tell you what, I rescind the motion, I'm sorry, Chris. Um, I rescind the motion. There will be an ambulance committee meeting March eighth. Um, it will be at Copeland Courthouse in Benton at six-thirty, and, uh, Ms. Rogers, would you put this agenda item on next month? Don't wait on the eighth?
I'll come back that day.
Are you planning back that day? Correction, it won't be on the eighth, it will be on the, uh, tenth, Thursday the tenth, Thursday the tenth. Six-thirty at, six-thirty or seven, or? Which one's easier to get down?
Seven.
Seven's wrong. You can't stake championship.
Can the public attend that, or just?
Yeah. Do what?
Six-thirty, the public can attend that?
Yeah, no, yeah, all, all.
Everything's always open.
Every committee meeting.
Roman!
Every, every committee meeting, board meeting, and commission meeting is open to the public.
Just to clear that up, the only time anything's not open to the public, we can meet an executive session with our attorney and without the public or the newspaper, but it has to be discussed and attended litigation. That's the only way we can meet without public.
And then any action we take on that has to be in the open meeting. We can't.
Everything's always open, one-hundred percent to the public. Uh, moving on to number six, we got solid waste proposals.
I think you put on everybody you.
Yeah, well, I tell you what, last month, he used.
That, um, that is in regards to, um, some, Todd and Mickey are here with universal waste. Some of the things that you all seen in your packet was the extensive turnaround time that universal waste has been experiencing using the Metal Branch landfill. Todd and Mickey probably have a little more to add to it. I know today we had a turnaround time of about an hour and a half per truck inside of the Metal Branch landfill. What that does is, if it gets down to the point, instead of being able to hurry in and hurry out, it does put a, a strain, if you would, on some of our smaller facilities. This happened, uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago with Benton, and it also happened back in and around the first of the year with Benton. So what we had to do is, is we were able to use Todd and Mickey's business of universal waste to take some of our trash to the Republic, or to the Bradley County landfill, which is now managed by Republic. Republic has submitted that to work through an RFP, that the tonnage rate would increase for that time, while we did go up to an RFP, uh, to thirty dollars a ton. But they thought that they would get very competitive with our tonnage rate once that happens. The biggest difference in that is, is being able to go to the Bradley County landfill is literally a fifteen-minute in and out. Am I right, Mickey?
Yeah. Let me, let me speak to one thing. What he said today about us having a truck up there, we fitted one and a half trucks to do Benton and Copper Hill. Today, we have three trucks tied up, all sitting at the landfill in Athens. Because they go in, they're sitting there for an hour and a half to an hour and forty-five minutes. Well, you know, we're a fairly small company, we've got four trucks.
Is that the Altria source?
So the rest of, you know, the rest of our customers weren't getting service today while we're sitting in the landfill up there trying to service, you know, keep your service centers open. And we're, you know, we're trying to do the very best we can for you all, where your county residents are not having to haul the garbage in, take it back home, bring it back the next day. So we're trying to keep your convenience centers open, but there's going to, there's kind of time in the near future, if we're not able to improve those turn times, we're going to go back to one and a half trucks, and if the convenience centers have to shut down until we can get to them, we just have to do that, because we can't take trucks off everybody else's.
And it's going to get worse when summer hits.
It's going to get worse when the summer hits. So if we can address this now, maybe we'll head off a problem. I know the rate's a little higher right now. Hopefully, they'll get a negotiated rate a little better once we get all the tonnage. But literally, it's, it takes us twenty-five minutes to get from Benton or any other one on the west side of the county, to Bradley County. It takes an hour and fifteen minutes to get to Metal Branch.
To get there, and then we.
Just to get there.
Three trucks a day, one set an hour and a half, one was an hour and forty-five minutes, and the third was an hour and forty-five minutes. So they, all three make one shift.
They changed their procedure about five months ago, and it has been an absolute nightmare. We've had trucks tied up there for as long as four and a half hours to do a dump, to do a dump. It is, it's been a nightmare.
This has been big for everybody. In fact, he was saying that he went to the, um, McMinn County Commission, and it was a huge topic there. They were all.
They just, I mean, I don't know what their thought pattern is, but they've made where that facility is all of its not usable.
What's the name of that facility?
Metal Branch.
Metal Branch. You said, uh, Republic?
Republic now manages the Bradley County landfill.
And you said there would be a higher, during the negotiations, during an RFP?
Correct, during through the, through the, the RFP, while that process is out, Republic has issued a thirty dollars per ton rate that we would be set at while we work through that RFP.
And what's the current, uh, what's the current?
Twenty-two fifty-seven. But it's like Todd and them, but also if you look in your packet, you'll see where I've been in this with Tim Watson for months. You know, they purchased, he says, almost a million dollars in a, in a new dozer. I had a hundred thousand dollars worth of work done. But all these things that they're doing, they still cannot get trucks in and out of that landfill in a turnaround time that's sufficient.
You pull in, you pull in the gate, you have to CB, tell them that you're there, and they wait, they wait to CB you when you can bring the truck out. It's, it's ridiculous.
They're not able to go in and out, and like Mickey and Todd were saying before, uh, whenever it was under a, um, another administrator, it was a lot better. But since they've put somebody else in to manage that landfill, it's horrible.
Okay, how many, how many potential landfills do we have that would be interested in RFPs? Is there enough to save the substantial?
Two, three, can, can you think of any others? I know Metal Branch and Republic.
Well, you, you know, not that, not that it's feasible really for us to haul from Copper Hill to, there's another one in Ray County that's, uh, but I mean, it's, it's as, it's as long to get to it as Metal Branch.
And it's owned by Republic.
And it's owned by Republic, so they're going to give you the same rate probably that you give me in Bradley County.
And if you remember when we went through this the last time, because the question was raised, using the transfer station on this end of the county, and they were forty, forty-two or forty-six dollars a ton, it was tremendous, tremendous amount of board to go to the transfer station on the east side.
So, if we go with, if we get hard to feed with Bradley, are we going to be completely cut off from Metal Branch?
Or Metal Branch would still?
Would we still have an option if something happened there?
If something happened at Bradley?
Still an option there?
Yes, if something happened at Bradley, but Todd and Mickey will tell you, they're going to try to get everything they can to Bradley just because of the faster turnaround times that they can experience.
Well, that, and once you commit all your, all your waste to them, you'll get a better rate.
Correct, after the RFP.
After the RFP, that's right. I mean, that's, volume is, volume is money.
Did y'all give me the order to break this contract, to go up to RFP, or is it want to stay with Metal Branch? I understand that it's seven dollars and forty-three cents a ton difference going through this sixty-day RFP cycle. And I do, I understand that, but it, what cost is that goes back to the people whenever you have sites that are.
What hits us if we break the contract, is there a, is there a, is there a gouge that's coming up?
No, I have spoken with our county attorney, I have sent numerous letters to Metal Branch landfill, I've had numerous conversations with Metal Branch landfill. They are aware that, that as a county executive, that I'm not satisfied with the services that they're rendering to our constituent in the county, so.
Have they broken the contract?
There was nothing in there that said that, you know, as far as their turnaround time. That's, that's the issue. They cannot get those trucks in and out of that landfill.
But there's nothing that's going to come back to bite us for breaking the contract, there's no word. No early cancellation.
And they get, and they get the right to turn back in an RFP and bid again. They may come back even cheaper, but your, your haulers are going to tell you that they cannot keep them running, it's not efficient for them.
I make the motion that we give you the authority to, uh, step out of current contract and take out RFPs on sixty-day cycle, uh, seventy-five day cycle. Give you extra fifteen days for the, uh, for paperwork turnaround.
I'll second it. Got a motion by John, a second by Debbie. Any more discussion on solid waste?
I think we ought to talk to Mr., I guess, Watson, Timothy Watson, is that who it is?
Tim Watson.
Yes, sir.
At Metal Branch?
Yes, sir.
Um, I know he was here at one of our meetings, and we talked to him, and he seemed to be, uh, working towards getting something, uh, adjusted on his, uh, the time in and time out. But, uh, I think we ought, he should have a chance to be able to come up to the car before we. But he has, he's had notifications. You have sent, you read into it the letters that you sent back.
I have, we have, I have been working on this since September with Metal Branch.
About a whole year, yeah. Well, you said they hadn't been nothing said about the time in and time out for the driver.
No, that's, that was the part of the whole. No, that's what the whole discussion has been, and he sent you, in this year, he has said that how the equipment that he has purchased to try to make this to be a better, uh, for them, but they, they cannot, they're, even with everything that they've tried to do to adjust it, they've not been able to satisfy the need of your haulers.
Well, they've not, and it's not just us going in up there, you know, if it were just us going in, it wouldn't be a problem. But it's all the other haulers that are going in, and they have one station that they dump at. So if you've got forty trucks lined up to dump, everybody's waiting to lift one station, the way they've got it set up. That's the problem. I don't know how they're going to remedy that unless they go to an open landfill, kind of the way Bradley County is. You've got, you back up to the end of the, top of the ridge, and you dump it, they cover. Up there, you dump it off into a concrete pit, they come and get it with a dozer and pull it out. They won't let one, one truck up there at a time to get there. I mean, it's just, I don't know how they fix that.
Yeah, I've seen that in Bradley County, I know what you're talking about.
And, uh, and on November the twenty-third, I was seeing a picture from one of the haulers, I don't know what it was, that there's literally seven trucks going around the curve, and they're still back away, they're doing, they're not even inside the gate at Metal Branch. This picture that I have sent. And Mr. Watson was aware that the meeting was here this week. I contacted him as far as it being canceled last week.
Believe me, we don't want to be here doing this. I mean, you know, but it comes down to, we have a business to run also. I mean, you know, so we've got, you know, we're trying to do the very best job for you we can do, but we got to run, we got to run our business to service all of our customers, you might be.
Cutting the haul down two hours, you going to go to discount?
I'm going to tell you, we're losing money right now.
Yeah, I mean, it's a illusion. It is not a mandate. If something happens between the time that you send up to RFPs and you want to negotiate something on, uh, you know, within the current contract, you have every authority to do so. It's not a, you know, a mandate. They authorization only. If something comes up, Fender, and you can work it out, we'll have that.
And I, and I've told them, the only other alternative I know is if it was, you know, if they give us a fast pass, kind of like this, and let those trucks go live, they're not going to do that, because.
It only takes for a fast pass now?
And, and, uh, Todd and I, I think you talked to Mickey with what Mark's question was, I know that our increase in fuel is on our contract right now.
That's correct.
And we had spoken about maybe taking that off if you all were allowed to run to the Bradley County landfill. Would that still be an option as far as some of the questions?
Well, here's the problem I have with that, is one, we're losing money now. My first thought was, we're going to save, it's twenty-five dollars extra.
Correct.
We're going to save a lot more than twenty-five dollars by getting to Bradley County, so I see that side.
What costs did you go?
And then with Russia pay, I hope those will, this could get greater. We're not even. Cut my throat, you know?
I knew that we were talking about it, I, I didn't know we had a.
You're adding the twenty-five dollars, and no matter how much fuel goes, we're, we're even, we're at, you know, um, I just don't know what we can do. When we originally bid this contract, we bid it, well, well, two ways, we bid it by hauling two, two trailers, especially on the side of the mountain, taking one and two together. And, uh, Metal Branch worked with us on that, and, um, then we found out that we did a really good job of getting the, the tonnage weights up to save money for the county. But by doing that, what we were calculating by hauling two is now we're overweight of what the highway will allow you to haul, so we were illegal. So we had to drop the trailer, so that cut our expenses.
That doubles our fuel cost.
And then we also were looking at going to Bradley County originally, and then we suggested that you all go get your contract direct through at Metal Branch, which saved you money too, but hurt us, so. And the reason that we did that, not Bradley County, then, if you remember, Sam Tech was bidding on it at the same time. And Sam Tech at that time. Now they've sold out Republic, so Republic says bring the truck.
I said I was just wondering if they.
Anything else? Roco.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
No.
Debbie Esma.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Uh, yes.
Samantha Trenton, yes. And James Switty.
No. Motion passed. Next is, uh, past employees' artnement.
What was it?
Past employees' artnement, with type of class month?
Yeah. That's me.
Right, well, my name is by the type of class month. I like everybody here concerned with that, the committee meeting.
You know, my stand on it, I, I think they ought to get it, if they was working at least two months and then completed the third month, ought to get all three months, and any other time that they worked during that COVID time. I committed, I mean, you've got so many flipping in, in the jail, that I know you can't address every single one. You had a lot of them there a month, five weeks, and you just can't address them. But, uh.
I think we may have had, the time period is March. I think we may have had, the time period is March first to twenty, to October thirty-first to twenty-one.
Yes, sir.
I think every combination of months possible in that time period, I believe we had maybe three, that was our entire time, the whole eighteen months. So the rest of it's going to be, or from one month to seventeen months, and everywhere in between, I believe we had around three, no more than four, that was our whole eighteen months.
That's why I'm saying you'd have to include at least two months, you know, they, they would've had to complete the third month to get the three months.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying it could be the number.
If they didn't hit at least three months, then, or, yeah.
It's gonna be a process coming up with a number, 'cause we're gonna have to identify each individual employee, y'all sixty-one of them, and look at their months, it's gonna be anywhere from one month, eighteen months, and anywhere in between.
And this is gonna be throughout the pound head? Patrice?
Yep, I mean, I don't wanna do that.
Exactly, okay, and so this is something that we will need to be looking at to compensate her, some what on hers and her system, because it has to go through both of them. This is not in her job description. And, uh, but, you know, I mean, we're not talking big bucks here, but we are just talking about a little bit of hourly, you know. Uh, because she's gonna have to, I mean, she'll stay over, she's gonna, 'cause she's still got a regular job to do, and she's gonna have to figure out this on top of that. So she's gonna have to stay over of evenings and do something, she can't make it, pull it out of her hat, make it all clear. But we, if that's what we decide we wanna do, then she's gonna be willing to do everything she can do to make everything happen. So all, everybody's gotta do is just come up with what you months and figure and start letting her pull her together, I guess.
Well, we gotta see if we're gonna do it first.
I know, that's what it's at, and then we need.
Or we need an amount first and see what we're gonna do.
The original amount was forty-five hundred.
No, I'm talking about tracking all six, one of these employees, your times are.
You're talking about all to do the work.
I mean, for, not, I mean, retired and gone employees, right?
No, this isn't retired, this isn't retired, this is, uh.
I'm talking about the sixty-one people, that's gonna have to be tracked down individually, and see if they worked between one month and eighteen months, and then come up with a total to get back to us. That way we at least know what amount we're voting on.
Right.
It's kinda like what come first, chicken or egg, I mean, are we gonna vote to do it first, and research the map, we're gonna research the map, and then vote? We're talking up to quarter of a million dollars.
Do what? You're talking up to quarters of a million dollars.
Up to, but it's still an unknown, the map.
We can buy an analyst for that.
I don't really have a problem either, why do I say that?
That if somebody got the map, they like throw out there for Patrice to do the research.
Is this just gonna be for county one oh one employees, or just for one thirty-one and?
That's another question, there's sixty-one under one oh one, plus the road department, plus the schools, so it could be close to a hundred. Whether the road department's including that sixty-one, correct?
No, that's just one oh one.
No, I just, that's my.
So we got sixty-one in the one oh one budget, plus the schools, plus the road department, so that needs to be addressed too. If we do it for the county, we're gonna do it for the road department and the schools, since we gave them the balance. I mean, it's, the number is a, a big unknown. But step one, to get to that number, we need to.
I have something to say, I actually have a list on the computer down there, they'll give it to you, um, that I had to keep up for TCI, and that's anybody's the hard day and the day they left, and it was kept up until November.
So we'll have it from the jail pretty easy.
Yes, it's actually on my computer.
A pretty good consensus from the great, now, county, originally when we were turning in hours were, um.
That's just on the jail.
Then to the, to the school and stuff, it's all, it was, it was not there.
And you're gonna have, you're gonna have to know upfront, if, if we go with calculation first, are we looking at, uh, saying, okay, they had to be here minimum three months, or six months, uh, to qualify? Cause there's several, I'm sure in the jail, jail was pretty high flip overall.
Oh, yeah, we had some, uh, work a day, or work a week, you know.
Right, and, and no, that's not substantial enough, I'll say it's not substantial enough, 'cause it actually goes against my argument before, it's not locked in enough to, uh.
You just can't get into that kinda niche for it.
No. And.
If we knew this, I would say no less than six months.
Less than six months, uh, of service time during the.
And that on the jail side will be cut down tremendously then.
What is art?
Art, American recovery, money from, we call it COVID money.
Was it in their contracts when they hired?
No, but when, when it started, I mean, art money wasn't even in place, it was, it come, the money become available after the start date, and when it became available, it had guidelines in it, the time you needed to work. And it's real great, it's, I could very easily, if I was an attorney, I could argue it either way, and make a good argument on past employees, it's real great how it's addressed. Uh, you know, one part of it says to pay an employee, okay, so if you're not here now, you're not an employee. At the same time, it gives the guidelines of March.
What, you were an employee for the time you're paying for though?
The guidelines say March the first to October thirty-first, that you were to be employed, like I said, it'd be very easy to make an argument either way, on how you interpret, uh, it's, uh. And everybody makes a good argument, both sides, I mean, a real good argument, uh.
But I think, I think I'm willing to go along with the six-month thing myself, uh, and I know that that still might step on a few toes, I'm not saying it won't, but. It, it's gonna get too, it's just gonna get too technical.
Who was the recommendation, say?
The recommendation from CTS is no.
Yeah, their recommendation is no, period.
No, we don't have else, that's given.
What have other counties given?
Nothing.
Nothing. And we're wanting to find money for the ambulance, but we're wanting to spend up to a quarter of a million dollars now on people that no longer here, they chose to go elsewhere. They did, but they served their time during the. Did they get paid in that time? They did. Did anybody miss a paycheck during that time? Yes. Okay. What paycheck did they miss? They didn't, they didn't get the premium pay that the others did, they got the paycheck.
Oh, he's asking if they missed a payroll check.
No, they didn't, because counties will pay for time served, that's a fact. If there's nothing else, you learn the trade, it's that, you will pay for time served.
All right, we agree, on the six months.
When you say stage, you mean CTS, you must, oh, God.
Yep, or CTS, County Technical System Services. I make a motion to set the guidelines for the art premium pay for those who serve that are no longer working here during March first to October thirty-first, at a minimum of six months for consideration. And to, uh, request the Director of Council Budgets to provide us with an estimate of how many people that'll be.
Okay, next question, do we compensate her for extra work, and what's the amount per month, is the same as the current employees got paid?
You said we needed to know what, how we.
All right, we're gonna know how much you want to pay them a month, so she can do her calculation, you wanna compensate them at the same rate as the current employees compensate, what, two hundred and forty a month, for every month?
No, it's two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five a month.
I think that's what we had discussed.
Well, I've heard everything thrown around, different numbers, so it needs to be in the motion.
Yes.
But then I think that that's about, and it's gonna be done more than you guys, the people in here, man. If it's more than six hundred dollars, but you have to pay.
But what she's saying, they're not employees, so she can't do federal withholding on somebody that don't work for the county.
Myself, I have to issue a ten nine.
So that's a.
Yeah. Can't issue a ten nine nine.
There is a.
Right, and then that, so that's their problem?
There is a.
I mean, it's. Either way, if you, if you held out, you gotta pay, end of the year, you gotta pay.
TCRS said they had a procedure that they would work us on, on retirement, part of that. I've got the lady's name, matter of fact, she left him a message.
There would be no.
According to TCRS, there is.
These people are down, how come they haven't attached up their retirement, if they hadn't yet?
But according to the TCRS lady, it's a thing.
I'm not taking sides, I'm just trying to be informed with everybody, the TCS issue, he's speaking of is true, and IRS, he's talked to them, however. What they're saying, if we find that we're cleared by the state to give this money, then they're saying, yes, deal with it, but there's a step in between. Where the we find out from the state, we can do this or not, but they're just saying if we do pull it off, then there are avenues to deal with it as far as TCRS and the IRS is concerned, once it gets to them. But there's a step for us to find out before it gets to them, so I'm just trying to get it all out there, so there's no confusion.
So. So, 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 um. That motion's staying, like you said it, okay. Yep. How did I say it? They had to be here six months to be eligible.
They'd be eligible. Be eligible.
And it would be at the forty-five hundred a year, which is two, two.
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five a month, it wasn't a year, it's March through October first.
And your six months wasn't from March first, it was any six month, being, being late thing.
Yeah, yeah, it couldn't be, you couldn't do it that way. We just gonna have to come in and go.
And ain't no county, county that has done this?
No.
Not done no other.
I don't know if it's the same thing, Bradley County did pay their county employees COVID money.
We've already done that.
We've, we've done that, uh, this is strictly dealing with the ones that have left before the October thirty-first.
They didn't even pay the ones that retired.
No.
Point.
Are the ones that.
Hey, we, I didn't hear you.
Um, yeah, that was addressing the ones that left before the, the vote at that meeting, not before October thirty-first.
The vote of the meeting, ours is October thirty-first, that's our set date, but, uh, I can't remember how Bradley County made the vote of the meeting. So they done theirs a little bit earlier.
So your exact motion is?
The requirements are they have to be here six months, um, complete six months employment during the COVID time, to be eligible. And as long as they do, that they're eligible for the forty-five hundred, which is two twenty-five a month.
Up to the forty-five.
Oh, up to forty-five hundred, yes.
Which will be pro rata at two twenty-five a month.
And the part-time up to two thousand, which is. Tracy, you remember what the part-time was, uh, per month?
He was paying for that, I remember.
So the, uh. I saw one of the records, I passed out there. Didn't say how much a month on two thousand. Hundred dollars per month. I had a gun on. It was a quarter of it, just the county employees, it'd be a lot more than that possibly, we'll get them all in.
But, yeah, it's huge, I don't know.
Yes.
It takes some weight, barriers. Was that your most, John Hoard?
Yep, it's based on one-on-one. Then one thirty-one, then one sixteen.
Got a motion on the table with John Hoard? Anybody? All right, is this to pay him, or come up with a number and then vote on the next one?
This is to generate the number.
Yeah.
My understanding is that's as far as we want to go right now.
This is just to look at the number?
Yep.
Uh, any more to go? Rocco.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
No.
Dewey Espona?
No.
Mark Evans?
No.
Jeremy Kenzie?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Tranpan?
No.
James Woody?
No.
Five no and four yes. You love to change the letters?
I won't pass.
Well, this time includes the ones that you're, then, you know, like retired.
No, this failed.
Has, has the commission ever passed, so the retirees?
That's what I said. That's, yeah, they got passed.
No, have they been paid?
No.
That comes up next on it, Jen, I thought it said next.
They've been paid.
No, that's been paid. No.
They were what?
No.
No was what?
He has not been paid.
Is he a retiree?
That's what you said, he's been classified.
When did I say that?
Y'all asked for whatever, Dewey asked for whatever.
We asked about a doctor's note, but, I mean. Well, I mean, when we asked for the doctor's note, and I, and two, I mean, I'm being honest, I don't know what constitutes a retiree, that's above my pay grade.
He'd still be working for the county up in jail, if he had not come back with COVID, been in the hospital, and not had enough lung capacity to return to his job.
Well, I don't disagree with that, but I'm saying, how do, what's the steps to classify you as a retiree, what's the protocol?
That's what was said in the meeting, was that he'd be considered a retiree, said he could not go back to his job, and he had, he had to step down from his job. And the doctor said that.
Who, who said that in the meeting, you remember?
You did.
You know, do what?
I said you could bring in a letter, the doctor saying you had to retire because of COVID, and then we could consider whether you retire or not, I didn't guarantee nothing.
So y'all, y'all, y'all never gave it another thought?
We haven't even got to that, that's.
In the last month?
That's number sixteen on the list that we're not gonna get to because we ran out of time.
Well, I don't wait a month, I've been waiting a month.
I mean, this is the first time that we've had it in it since.
Because Mr. Brooks, at the meeting I went to a month ago, pointed to the camera and said, I'm stating this to the recorded camera, that we're gonna get this taken care of.
That was two months ago, right here, and when I said.
No, no, it wasn't, sir, 'cause I did not come to Duck Town, I went to Benton.
It was at the Duck Town meeting, two months ago.
No, it wasn't, sir, I have a bad back.
You can't, if.
No, it wasn't.
We got them big, I said, I'm gonna finish.
No, it wasn't, I have a bad back, and I don't like coming over this far.
Okay, I remember what I said though, it was a Duck Town meeting, I made a comment, a lot of people was here, I said, the farther this goes on, the wider the gap's getting, we should be closing the gap.
Okay, so that's the second, second thing that you've not said.
And I said this will be voted on next month, at the January meeting, which was in Benton, it got voted on, we decided before the meeting, that we're gonna take care of the current employees. And then we're gonna look at what money's left and address the past employees, and I challenge you to find one word that I just said, it's not a hundred percent accurate.
Okay, I'll go find, I'll go find the, the thing, because I was classed, you did that after the meeting, um, Rob, did I not talk to you, but did we not talk to you about, and, and do it as well? Did I not talk to you about the, um, the internet, about that company?
I remember you at the Benton meeting, I mean, I, now, I don't remember, and I'm being honest on both sides, I don't remember everything that was said, I do know that we, that it was being discussed, that.
Yes, that's the one I went to. I'm the only one I went to.
And I do remember about a doctor's note, as it said.
That's the one I went to, he came over another time, that's the only one I went to, I'm disabled, I have a bad back, and the longer car trips hurt my back, I have not come over here.
Yeah.
Well, I remember saying, was right here, and the whole road department sitting back there in that very corner when I said.
I don't know what you said at another meeting, I'm talking about the meet, the meeting that I attended in Benton, he pointed at the camera and said, I'm stating this on record to be recorded. That the, the money that's to be dis, to be distributed, to, we're discussing about, to the past employees, will be discussed and handled at the next meeting.
Which is right now.
Well, no, it's not.
That was a January meeting, this is a February meeting, that we're at right now, the January meet was in Benton, you're going to, then go ahead. You're going to, then, go ahead, bring it on.
Oh, I will, because he went to the next meeting, and he wanted to put it, and said, does anybody have anything else to say? And he was gonna say something, and, and I asked him, well, why didn't he say anything, and he, and he goes, well, everybody else, well, people weren't happy about it, but you, y'all said, we're just gonna roll it off to the next meeting.
Which is tonight, the February meeting, we said it at the January meeting, that we would address past employees at the next meeting, which is February, which is the meeting we're at, right now, and we, it is only at Benton, we done exactly what we said we were gonna do.
No, because you had several meetings that you were gonna do, that were on a regular scheduled meeting, you had a Thursday, then you were gonna do it on a Tuesday.
Yeah, and we called it off.
Yeah, we had to call one of them off.
That very night, and I think the keyboard warriors started on us, we're calling the meeting off.
And pointing at the camera, so we're gonna get this taken care of, because I don't wanna put it off any longer.
Okay.
It's not my fault that you can't remember what you said.
End of discussion, well, I will say, I could not thunderstorm that night, all the cameras were changed, everything was canned. Yes, we did cancel that meeting to the night, and the same night, trees fell from one end to the other, and roads were shut down, and I think we made a good decision, but, we're at the exact meeting, discussing the exact thing that I said we would at the last meeting. We're doing exactly what we said we would do.
But he wants to, he pushed it off again, till tonight, and then he's gonna push it off, and push it off, and push it off, and push it off.
What did we push off beside the stump?
Anyway.
The vote meeting was not pushed on beside the stump there.
It will be addressed, uh, that's a given, because we've got to address it as soon as, and how many months did he have in during that time? From, what?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay, so, I mean, he's gonna be considered like what we're talking about tonight, correct?
Yes, but I've not.
Considered as who?
I've not done one thing, I have not said publicly what we're gonna do, the only thing, period, is the town praying, because we changed this meeting from ice week, because of the thunderstorm. Besides that, it's always, just like we said.
I mean, people that were there until after October thirty-first aren't even being considered, I mean, that's basically what this vote was.
I, I'm, and that discussion is over.
I think you ought to call the meeting in order and go on.
That's what I'm doing, uh, we'll move on to number eight, uh, I had that on ours, about the state right of ways. Uh, I have spoke with the sheriff, and he's addressing it, uh, they get money, or they've got money, to do the backroads, and I was just saying, where the state had, are getting all sales tax increase from inflation, that's the only good thing, it's coming out of inflation. The state's collecting right at four hundred million a month over projection, and I like to ask states, uh, they cut the county's money off for lead pickup on the state right of ways, and it's getting a little real bad on four eleven sixty-four, and somebody could call Mr. Howell, or just run it by him, I'd like to see some of that increased revenue used for, I mean, we're a tourist in Ken, and the roadside just keep piling up on the state highways, backroads look pretty good, that, uh, inmates taken care of, but, uh, the state highways are just getting worse every day, I mean, it is, it's terrible, and I know there's plenty of money, so, maybe somebody can take Dan Howell, and ask him to look into getting something done about later. And that's all that was, that is, uh, internet commissioner's.
We went out for bid for internet service in the county, used art money for, there were two bids that come back, one of them from V E C for thirty-four million, five hundred and ten thousand, thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents to their service area people, anybody in the county that gets V E C power, they proposing to book internet too, we also had one from Array for two million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and two cents, which would cover the entire county with penetrating tree technology, so that wasn't just the line of sight. Both of these will have to go out to the grant process, the state, the grant, the state is a lot more rigorous than we are. Whoever's gonna get the grant from the state is the one we've got a bid on, now, one thing about V E Cs, their thirty-four million for the, their service area is broken up into nineteen different areas, they're basically gonna do nineteen different little grants, put together, and we're supposed to do a ten percent match up to one point seven four million, six hundred and sixty.
One point, one seven five, right?
No, theirs is one million, seven hundred, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, six, sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, to be exact with their bid.
And it's what?
One million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
You said one point seven, spot on my attention.
One point one seven.
One point one seven.
Yes. When they get the grant, if they get the grant, they get to pick and choose, the state's gonna pick and choose which areas are gonna get it, they may not get the whole eighteen areas, it's totally out of our hands then. So everybody that thinks they're gonna get, if V E C gets the grant, they're gonna get the internet service, you may, or you may not. It depends on which part the county has granted the grant, so be aware of that, it's not gonna be on us, it's gonna be on the state giving the grant, the way that V E C wrote it, so, if only the northern part gets it, and the southern part gets cut out, because the state doesn't wanna give thirty-four million dollars to Polk County, then we've got no say-so in that, so just be aware that we may get the whole thing, which I consider very unlikely, because they're not gonna give thirty-four million dollars to Polk County, when there's only four hundred million for the entire state, so, they think they can get, they think there's a sixty-six percent chance they can get some of it, or a lot of it, but, there's no guarantee, we're gonna match up to ten percent. If they get the whole thirty-four million, we'll only still have to put out the one point one seven four million.
So, that wouldn't cover us over here in Polk, for any, this side of the county?
V E Cs would not, unless you have V E C power, you would not.
Which we don't.
But there, there is the grant coming through Spectrum.
That's the one with radio towers, or?
No.
No, that's, that's hardwire.
That's, that's fiber, alright, Array is produced, is gonna do a fixed wireless, which is supposed to be tree pen, tree penetrating.
Unless you have a tree in front of you, which the guy from Array said that you'd have to cut a tree, or move your antenna, that's what he said, Mr. Dewey, it's their own thing.
And, and, and I know the technology you're talking about, it's.
Mr. Pippinger? That, in their original proposal for five hundred and seventy-three thousand.
No, this was with, this was with the second guy.
No. Well, I'm not gonna worry about that.
We still have mountains, and it won't go through mountains.
They're gonna, they're gonna provide it, so it's gonna provide to the entire county, Forner, Springtown, wherever it might be, North South.
That every house, every person in the county will have internet.
Anybody's gotta be saying.
No, no, the other guy.
The other guy?
Well, they guarantee that.
You got a pile of phone you have.
Are they gonna provide that pole?
No.
You'd have.
No.
That's on you.
But you can only put out a three hundred foot pole and hit anywhere in the county, so, that, that's.
It's up to the, it's up to the state to choose which one's gonna get the grant, and they're gonna have to themselves, that they've got the backing financially, and they've got the technology. So I just wanna say, whichever one gets it.
So not really up to anybody, except the state.
Bottom line, it's government funds, and we have to put it out for bid, so everybody, anybody that's interested in it, does have opportunity to pursue the money, just to.
So the state decides if it's gonna be V E C, or these other guys, or.
The state's gonna give, give the grant, and we can't afford it without the grant.
It's on a point system, so.
When, when is that decision?
That our side has already been granted.
That's a resolution here tonight, that, uh.
That we didn't have to match that one.
That matches, that puts the one point one seven five up, and locks it in, and then they match a donation, if you've got that resolution. It will not be extended unless the, uh, entities that, uh, to the R F P N is selected by the grant process.
That grant will start when child state gets their, um, full attachment agreements, this with the state of Georgia, because they're in Georgia. Once they get their attachment agreements, our side will start, but.
So that's gonna be Spectrum?
Yes, and it'll just mostly be Forner and Charlie.
Have a question, so if V E C goes for the grant, and they get the minimum, you're talking about going back to just that original area?
We don't know, it's broken up to nineteen areas now.
Okay.
State, the Fed said you can do everything that they can touch, so that's what they're going after now.
But who would choose which out of those nineteen areas, is that the state?
The state. The state will afford it on each one's, uh. And they have to be connected, they can't put one up north and one down south. Yeah. And it will take up to three years to get it completed.
That's the sad part, the V C, but it is, I think, the sound, the secure.
Oh.
V C.
Yeah.
And it, but it's completely.
Mr. Pippinger, you wanna read your resolution? You wanna read your resolution?
If I could read it, I would.
You want me to read it for you?
Yeah, you don't care.
Whereas the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee, has identified a correlation between the capabilities of utilizing high-speed broadband internet, and increased learning potential for students, increased productivity in work environments, and betterment in quality of life, this is the Polk County, and whereas the legislative body of Polk County also acknowledges that making vast improvements in internet speeds creates a direct increase in economic growth of surrounding areas, and it gives a website here you can look to look at, whereas in the best interest of Polk County, to capitalize on companies and grant opportunities to internet services to provide Polk County, Tennessee. Now therefore be resolved that Polk County Commission meeting in regular session this twenty-fourth day of February, twenty twenty-two, at the Copper Basin Community Center in Duck Town, that the county of Polk hereby and hereon designates a ten percent match, not to exceed one point one seven five million, to the approved bidder, or bidders, with such matching, with such match being a stakeholder reputation of grant money received by each bidder for the purpose of introduced high-speed broadband internet service to areas of the county which are serviced, non-serviced, and underserved. This resolution becomes effective on passage.
That'd be resolution one, two, twenty-two.
About two.
Two.
Two, one, twenty-two.
Two, one, twenty-two. Motion to approve? Second.
Got a motion by John Hoard, and second by Dewey, to approve resolution two, one, twenty-two.
If the grant money is not awarded to either one, the county comes back to the general fund.
Yes. Any more discussion? Rocco.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Gill.
Yes.
Debbie Yestman.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kenzie.
Yes.
Sean Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trampus.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Next is, uh, Boys and Girls Club, for copper, we're getting by here, Boys and Girls Club.
We do, hello. Hi. Hi, I'm Candace, this is Kimberly, we are, um, looking at next steps, getting a, what, no, okay.
This is fine, okay.
Okay, sorry, um, getting a Boys and Girls Club unit in Copper Basin, we know childcare is a national issue, you have kids, I have three, and they're, please take them after school, I beg you, um, they are a hassle right now, they're cute and adorable, and I made them, and I'm proud, yada, but, after-school care is really important for kids, it's affordable, and it's reliable, school, after-school care, which is something that lacks in a lot of communities. We know that this is a national problem, but Kimberly's gonna talk about some of the local steps we found.
Yes, so, I've spent many, many hours this week combing through lots of data, and you'll get to see a little sampling of this, my lovely, thank you, if you're wanting to pass out.
Everyone can fly there, thank you.
One side gives you some, um, some data that you have collected, the other side gives kids in general, of some of the, some of the things we're about, at the Boys and Girls Club, if you don't already know. So, we have been working with a grant from the state, and this grant has provided us an opportunity to give out certain surveys to different communities, including yours, so, we surveyed three specific groups, we surveyed the parents, guardians, and families of your community, we surveyed community members, and partners in the community, and then the youth themselves, and through that, we were able to gain some insight and understanding of Copper Basin area, and the people that make up the Copper Basin area, um, and we wanted to do this to understand the youth of your community, we wanted to understand what are some of the goals that your youth have, what are maybe some of the barriers standing between them from reaching those goals, and then what are the resources they have to help them get to those goals? So if you just wanna take a second, and look at the research that we have on there, some of it may be new to you, some of it you may have like, oh, I already knew that. Um, but, as I was combing through all of this data, there were two main important details that I just kept coming over with all three groups, one, your community loves and supports the youth of your community. I kept seeing that over and over again in the comments, everybody was commenting, we, we really support them, we want the best for them, we work hard for them, we need this for them, and the second thing is that you guys want the very, very best for your community, and you're willing to fight for that, and we are too. And we know that we can't do it alone, so we really need the community to be an advocate for us, we need for the districts to understand what this means for their communities, we need buy-ins from the community, um, it's something that we've been passionate about for a while, been exploring these options for a very long time, and we really, in these next steps, we want your guys' support, we wanna make sure that you guys have all of your questions answered, so if you do have any questions, we'll be here after the meeting, we would love to answer them, um, and if it's appropriate, you're more than welcome to ask those now, but we, we feel that it is very important and vital to this community to make sure that we can provide affordable and reliable childcare, um, so, we, we appreciate y'all's time, and considering it, thinking about it, we're looking, next step-wise, we're looking at location, um, figuring out what's a good fit for Copper Basin specifically, we have one in the Benton unit, uh, but we wanna make sure that we bring this here as well, making sure that we have, um, this available to the youth of Copper Basin, we've talked with the elementary school, we've gotten them on board, they're excited about it, um, and so we're, we're really excited with working with, with you guys moving forward.
Time frame.
Oh, timeframe, I thought you meant like I was done talking, and I was like. Made it just in time, alright, so, timeframe, we were really looking at starting it around the summer in, um, in partnership with the local schools, um, having it at Copper Basin Elementary, starting it there, and then finding an alternate location possibly, um, so, we would like to do something as soon as this summer to address some of those concerns.
Now, Dr. Jones has been supportive, he's mentioned it, so.
Y'all done an honorable job in Benton. What about community group up here, y'all, have y'all started, did y'all have a community group that started up here, supporting?
We have a few, we're gonna be hosting a few town hall meetings, so they are gonna be in some, like, different areas with, with some of the people that are kind of supporting this, um, one having, one being at the school, some local, um, small business owners have said that we can go there as well, and talk to some of their people that come frequently to, um, discuss what the Boys and Girls Club looks, looks like here, and to get their buy-in as well. We would love any opportunity to speak to people, if that's what you're asking, um, any opportunity to, like, speak to people in our community, to get people on board, we would love that too, so if you have anything in mind, let us know.
Make sure you contact, uh, already the three commissioners up here on this end, they'll be a great resource for y'all.
The what, I'm sorry?
The three commissioners up here on this end, they'll be a great resource.
Okay, yes, raise our hands, okay, one, two, three, okay, perfect, I will find all of you afterwards, don't even worry, um, great, that's great input, thank you so much. Is there any other questions or concerns?
Do we have to date town hall yet?
We don't, we, yeah, we don't have exact dates yet, we've been working with these local, um, small business owners to make, that we have, that, we're not taking business away from them, so we're getting those, those dates nailed down, and we could have them available at y'all's next meeting. Any other questions? If you think of any, while we're, while we're all thinking. We'll be here, waiting patiently, especially for you three. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank y'all, I, I believe, I don't think y'all will run into any opposition.
So far, everyone's been very welcome.
Uh, next is, uh, Polk County Road Department. Uh, next is uh, Pope County Road Department. Roy Jean Thompson, how down low is anybody here from Road Department, or does anybody know what that is about?
Yeah, they didn't give me any information.
I guess we'll table that next month. Liberty Tire Leader, Shannon Zaker.
Um, I was contacted by Liberty Tire, that's who we have contracted to do our waste tire program on both ends of the young. They are going to be going up, and so with that, they are going to have to go out to an RFP. I have talked with them through negotiations, and they are going to hold their current rate until after or around into the budgeting time. So, we will know a little more once that RFP goes out, if they would like to have that done, to have the increase earlier. They understand they're working with the budget of the county, so they are going to hold off on any type of increase, but we will know that when it comes out in RFP form. They're going to help us with that RFP, and I assume they'll probably be the only provider, but you know, they do provide the service, but that will be going out in RFP official letter, and recognize that.
So, they charge us for used tires?
It's part of our program, and we do receive funds back from new tire sales. That's what helps to fund the tire truckers that we have. But you as a county resident, you have a right to put five tires per month in that trucker, all you have to do is sign the paperwork, put it into.
I, I've, I've taken advantage of it because there's a ton of leftover tires from before I moved in here.
Yes, and I know as I was outside speaking with the um, Universal caller, the, another gentleman that made that, yes, it's five per month, per county resident. And all you have to do is whenever you bring it, it's your driver's license, you fill that out. New tires, you know, causes a new tire tax, the truckers are really there for our tire dealers and distributors, but you as a county taxpayer, you do get the right to five tires, put it in the truck.
Can we pay the dump extras?
No. Any, anything larger than that would be like, you know, with the volume that you have, that you had said, you know, that were now, you may be able to personally contact Liberty Tire and see if they've worked something out with you to bring you that, at that rate, it's five per month.
Four gallon diesel, take care of it real quick.
That not a good, that letter didn't think, did it, will be going up RFPs?
Uh, next, we got uh, RFP bids from Kenny Zaker. Cool.
Yes, sir. So, we had a lot of RFPs that went out once again. When I guess we'll jump on to first was the doors throughout the county buildings, that the commission had indicated we'd like to see automatic opening doors out. We only had one bidder, double A Glass Company, that submitted those bids. So, for the door at the courthouse on the east side, which is over by Jackie's office, that door is broken from the wind that has been and grabbed hold of it, but for that door in particular, to have this installed, this is without wiring. But that one door is thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And that is to have it where it does have the automatic opening click button opening to be ADA compliant. The other job that I see next is with the election commission office, to have that door done, was a total cost of nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The next door I'm looking at is the door at the health department on the west side of the county. And it's cheaper because it's not going to be as hard, but it's three thousand and nine hundred dollars. And then the doors at the community center, which are the doors on the side of the health department, it has to be both doors, it's a cost of nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars for those two. You can pick or choose whichever ones that you do want to, uh, but it does say in there that there is a two permit discount if he does all the doors.
Total?
Forty thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Forty thousand six eighty-four. And this puts us in ADA compliance with these.
Will it be done by election?
We'd still have to get someone to do the wiring.
Yeah, he did not specify with the maxed question by the election time. I have talked into the electrician that I use here, this door here is going to require additional eight hundred dollars for the electric along the, I've not been able to find anybody on the side of the county that wanted to come and look. But on the day of RFP opening, which Commissioner, and I believe Commissioner Espinosa intended, he said that a lot of those that you can actually pull power from the exit board that's on top of power this. But, and as well, he said that he would work on this door here, that it would be on a weekend, and he would work on the interior door first, and then come back on the Sunday. And he expected for these doors here to take about two days. Uh, the courthouse, he said that if he done that door, also it would be done on a, uh, starting on a Saturday morning, just because having to work around people. Uh, I expressed to him that it would be these doors, the doors here at the community center, and the doors at the election commission office that would need to be done first. And then the doors at the health department on the west side, and the door at the courthouse could be done whenever, yes, he was going to try to get those done by election time.
The, the door here, they're twice as much as nineteen thousand dollars because they're double, because they're two sets.
But that's only for one door to open, this is not, not all four doors will open at home, because when you have all four to open up at one time, if you have somebody in the wheelchair.
They're gonna get, yeah.
They're, they're taking the possibility, so it is for only one of those doors, but it's because of this building, they're cased inside of the building, and it requires a little more precision to take those doors out.
One of the things on the art money was uh, dealing with items such as this, although it's not art money now, since we brought it in or bringing it into one-on-one, but the money in a nutshell was there through, to the art fund.
And it was also asked as far as our one-time expense, some of the commissioners asked that, there is money in our one-time expense, money still to cover this, so.
And the governor's, the, the state money.
Yes, the state money.
I'll just say this for the election commission, if it cannot be done by the first week in April, I'd just rather it not be done until after the election.
Can you make sure he does this one first, because this one's super heavy and elderly, people have to come in here to vote.
He is, he is going to try to get them in the, in the fact time that he can. But he said that we need to also remember trying to get things ordered, trying to get all this stuff in, so the faster that he can know if he gets the bid on one door, the faster that he will start to work on it.
We're not in compliance, now that we took our RFPs out, and it, it kind of puts a magnet on the back of it, we're not in compliance. Make the motion to approve the, the full, full bid.
Got a motion by John Hoyt, approve the full bid, it's Mike's second. Trying quietly, but she did. Uh, any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Beal.
Yes.
Duvie Esman.
Yes.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Matthew Trenton.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
The next RFP you have is for the show barn, for the power. The only one bid turned in was from Sanders Fore and Group, for a total cost of thirty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eight cents. We do have the, this is for the electricity at the show barn. I will remind you that the RDGV grant that we do have will cover twenty-five thousand of the cost.
And it expires in June.
And I have been in contact, and it's not going to be a problem to get it extended pending this vote tonight. So, if you all push this off again, I will contact Ms. Maud, is her name, that we've been in contact with numerous times in the off. So, matter of fact, talked to her the other day, she wanted to know, and I told her, pending the vote of this commission, that's for an extension.
And there's, I have been talking to C T S on and off on some different issues, and this, one thing come up, you know, with, we put off a lot of bids, declined a lot of bids, especially the last eight months. Um, decline bids, we're going to have, we need to be a little more specific on the decline, as to state the reason why. And we also don't have to be more, no, we don't want, but we also won't have to be more specific on, uh, when we're going to take the lowest bid. Maybe because it's not necessarily the best bid, we're going to have to stipulate a little more specifically as to what.
Yep. I blame Bruce, he didn't work.
Hold on.
I said I'm blaming you, but it didn't work.
For what?
Everything you just got been saying.
Everything I just said, Bruce, I think what it is.
Is this the second time this is going out to bid, or third?
Third, all, all.
Electoral, uh.
Yes, this is the second time on the electoral, concrete was four times, I think.
Was this down or up from the last time?
It keeps going to go.
Same price? So, people sent it the first time, still didn't try to go under the bid that come in.
No other bids came in, we only got this one bid to submit. Bids go out in the, in the Pope County News, because it's paper general circulation. If y'all want to put more money in, I can just say the commission wants to put more money into the advertising, yeah, I'll firm that even, but I only have a, you know, a limited amount of what's appropriated through my budget for bids, for our net.
Once the force of the paper that we might want to go further.
But it goes out, would you explain, get, get your paper, what all does it go to?
We're required by laws to post it on the Tennessee Press website, which is available.
So, more people than just gets the Pope County, you just get to see it.
Oh, absolutely, it wouldn't, it wouldn't reach many people there at all, we're a small county, small circulation, yeah. But most people who are looking for jobs will probably access that online, I imagine.
There's some people.
Not, not necessarily.
Or they set to.
I think we've had a lot of people do it as well.
And I know myself, and Commissioner Brooks, we talked to, I talked to four, I think you talked to two about having to look at this.
Yeah, I told two or three people about it, just personally, like seen them at a store or something, seen their name on their van, and, you know, I told them specifically to go look at and bid on it, and they weren't even interested. I reckon everybody's shorthanded, can't keep help, and they're covered up, cause, I guess.
Well, the, the grant were going to be just out eleven thousand dollars, a little over eleven thousand.
Well, we've come this far, and we gotta get her finished.
Make a motion that we, I think I made this same motion last month, but uh, make a motion, we accept this bid.
I second it. Got a motion by James, second, by Dee, second. Long Mar and Bid for Show Barn, anything to discuss?
Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Beal.
Yes.
Duvie Esman.
Yes.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Matthew Trenton.
Pass.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Seven yes, one more, one no.
Last one, that I have as far as your RFPs, for the swimming pool, um, here on the east side of the county. There were a, if there was a no bid submitted for the repair of the swimming pool. The bid from Sanders Fore Company was a install a new thirty by fifty vinyl liner swimming pool uh, for a total of a hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, to, that was just for, here, I'll read it out, but it's the install of thirty by fifty vinyl liner swimming pool inside the shallow end of the existing pool structure. Existing pool is unrepairable, therefore propose a new thirty by fifty vinyl liner swimming pool inside the shallow end of the existing pool structure, and a new pool, pool would be plumbed in with eight turner, four skimmers, pump filter system that will consist of a two-point-six-five variable speed pump and a three-hundred-pound sand, sand filter. After the new pool is complete, the area outside of the pool would be backfilled with gravel and deck jets, deck jets being installed approximately over twenty, twenty feet within the new concrete pool deck. The next will be for the item number two, is inside of the deep end of the perimeter of the existing pool, we'd like to add an additional splash pad with eight splash pad jets. The splash pad will need to be completed with the appropriate pump and filter of a two-point-six-five variable speed pump and a three-hundred-pound sand filter. Inside the deep end of the perimeter of the existing pool, additional splash pad will be installed with eight jets. The splash pad will be complete with this pump and filter, for a total of a hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and six dollars and sixteen cents. In the existing kiddie pool, it will need to be renovated with concrete, with a drain, and one large splash pad jet. This vessel will also have its own approximated size pump and filter. It will be a one-horse variable speed pump with a one-hundred-and-fifty-pound sand filter, total cost of thirty-six thousand three hundred dollars. For the existing pool deck, it will need to be cleaned and all the cracks filled with gestic joint filler. Existing pool deck will be cleaned and all the cracks filled, a contracted price of thirty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. Those are the bids that were submitted.
What's the size of the car pool?
It's a little shake. You know, Dan?
I'm not sure on the size of it, I mean, I'm really not.
This total probably is over three hundred fifty pounds.
It's just big enough to make one of the high fly going, give it how that works.
Yeah.
That's what's required. I, I'm just going to throw this out there, if it's a choice between getting an ambulance or having a pool fix, I'd rather have an ambulance.
One of the big things there is an ambulance is a ongoing, occurring, where the pool is a, a uh, in, in general, a, a one-time expenditure, well, that's what we, that's what we, that comes into play too.
Problem, I mean, people expect a lot, and they're way within their rights, but we're broke. And that pool, I know, I've seen it before in some, it's unreal, a kid used that pool, you know, so, I mean, we need to put some kind of remedy into, remedy in something, or, I mean.
I mean, I know this is a little high, but uh.
There's got to be a cheaper remedy.
I know this is going to be a third time something that, but I would like to put it out to bid one more time.
Uh, there, what I keep hearing too, there's a lot of questions that nobody's there to answer, when they come and look at it. I think the building committee, if we could have a building committee meeting, and set up a time with any potential bidders, and us meet with the building committee.
Yeah.
And I think there's a lot of questions we could ask.
Well, I know a couple of them want to come and look at it, but they couldn't jump the fence, you know.
Yeah, there you go, we'll have a building committee meeting.
I think we may got hung up, you know.
Uh, we've got to have one next week, maybe we can have one up here today, look at pool with some bidders or something else.
I don't know, if you put it back out to bid, you need to give it a timeframe this time, give it sixty days at least. I mean, yeah, and we need to put, make sure it's advertised.
Yeah, I need to go out till about April.
And on this one here, especially, I know the concern was before from some of the commissioners, we ran this one on Glenn's paper, as well as Walter's paper. And, and I go back to my statement, I mean, go, just remember that whenever we'll have to have more advertising done, but I don't care to put it as many places as you all want to see it, but every time this has come out, and I know it's pretty much been the same ones, but once again, I've contacted different pool guys, and all that.
You know, I find it kind of odd that nobody from Blue Ridge, you know, as big as Blue Ridge is now.
They're covered up.
Everybody's covered up.
I mean, everybody.
Years behind, but it, I mean, it looks like they would at least give us a bid and say it'll take two years.
Well, why dare? Everybody's a short-handed, they're already getting phone calls every night, getting dropped out places they're not supposed to be, and they're like, it's just going to hang in my truck.
Did that bid provide a timeframe? Or did that bid provide a timeframe, it's going to be complete?
I think it, see, and the way the economy is and inflation, it's hard to get in, bid something over thirty days.
Yeah.
I, it's, everything, everything we've bid in the last six months, even something, a sample of roll-up doors. I, it's, everything, everything we've bid in the last six months, even something, samples roll up doors, they specify this price is good for thirty day days. And if people do price enough where they for sure cover their tails, they ain't telling what to bid.
My question was, when, when would it be completed, when would it be open, would it be open for this summer? If not, putting out a bid for sixty days isn't gonna make a difference. Whereas, if you put it out for sixty days, nobody could have it open by this summer, might as well put it out for next summer.
Well, I meant a six, minimum sixty, I, I guess is the way to put it.
We've been doing thirty day bids, right? No, well, they've been out.
Twelve minutes.
Yeah, they, one time they were out for, I can't remember how many days before, and then we had a commission meeting in between, and you all wanted to put the repair out as well, so I won't think that first time around it was out for forty-five to sixty days, but in between there, if I'm not mistaken, the top of the repair, and we put that out with no bid that came back in, and then we went out again for, I think this was out for another thirty days. I can go back and look and see, this has been, been out for a long.
I make a motion to reject. I'm just asking, is, are any, any of the three commissioners up here, uh, wanting to go with the bid that's been turned in? Are y'all more interested in putting it back out or anything?
Yeah, just put it back out, rest of them's okay.
I make a motion to reject current bid, and status that it is not a complete for the repair of the current pool, and does not indicate an option to repair the current pool as is for both sections of the, uh. Well, you're right. Yeah, but the RFP was, the RFP was for repairing the pool, and you have to take out.
I've got a motion, my John second, my Dave, we gotta hurry it, running out of time. Roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Esman?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippen?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Witty?
Yes.
Uh, uh, next is.
We, we still have RFP from the way, we have to approve those RFPs for them to be valid for the grant process. Let's see, you've got two, uh, one for, uh, rate communications, one for BEC. Uh, the BEC is the same thing that they, uh, they're gonna have to do.
I think those have got to be approved when one of them gets the grant.
No, you have to approve the RFP for the grant process according to the lady that's over there grants. You can't, you can't do RFP and not approve the RFP, they're not, they've not been adopted as official, we're not accepted for all that.
Go ahead.
You've got to say yes. Uh, BEC is often the same thing that they did before, nineteen steps, is, uh, Mr. Esman has done stated, and the rate, uh, has offered a countywide vote grants for, and only is, and will accept them as bidders, that's all they have to be on file. Uh, Robbie, you know, I asked you that question earlier, yesterday and today, making calls, and yes, we have to accept RFP. Uh, I make a motion, we accept both bidders.
Second.
Motion, my John, my Dave, to accept both, uh, applications.
Any discussion?
I didn't hear the motion.
To accept both bidders?
Okay.
Is, is authorized bidders for, for county grants, uh, internet system.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Esman?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippen?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
And James Witty?
Yes.
Right, next is surplus property, I think one of these been, uh, before it, surplus property's been taken, being taken care of through the school system. It involves the, the barn and the house we bought, and we give the science teacher permission to use the barn and put animals in, and it's full of hay, but I think to identify who's hay it was, and they're gonna ask them about getting that, so I believe that's been resolved, and, uh, uh, do you wanna talk about the, uh, rest of the equipment in the show barn?
It's, we're gonna, we're gonna have the show barn wired and four floorboard, we need to clear it out. We need, I guess, to give the county exec or the building committee the right to go through, is that what we wanna keep, and what's surplus, or because this, they can't wire it, right, because they can't get to it. It's just stacked up, it's been stacked up with wood and things for years.
We don't want it back in the show barn, no.
I understand, and, and whenever that started, that was a lot of what was the repair associations, and if you remember, the trustees were basically kind enough to take it all out and put it out there for somebody to come get it. And they have not touched it, and so.
Give them an old, give them thirty days, and if it ain't there, then we'll take care of it.
Once again, I don't have it, I'll leave that to you all granting it to me, so if there are will, we'll get it.
I second. Got a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Got a motion, my James, second, my Dave, the request that be moved within thirty days? Any discussion?
Are you gonna try to sell it, if it doesn't get moved?
We have to declare surplus property.
And then?
And then we can sell it, but legally, we got to declare surplus property first, before we, uh, roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Esman?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yeah.
John Pippen?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
All right, next, uh, I've got a resolution, it's, uh, for, uh, deceased and retired employees, and here again, you may classify them as retirees, but we don't, how do you decide whether somebody's considered a retiree or not?
It's how their, um, termination paperwork is turned in, so, um.
But bring that to us, you know, during the month, for next month, you may, I mean, I, and really, that's not our expertise, and we never, I mean, I don't never, mere permission being tasked with classifying somebody as a retiree, I've never had that brought up, but, uh, get your stuff together.
It wasn't really brought up by me, it was, it was y'all.
Well, you gotta show proof of it, some, somewhere or another.
Yeah, I brought the letter to the place.
But I'm not sure, even if we said, even if we agreed with, I'm not sure that we got the authority to say, yes, he's a retiree.
We may have to go up over our heads to find out the answer.
Cause that, yeah, that's, that's a first for us, as far as finding somebody, but I would definitely follow up on it, you know, with your paperwork, Dr. Stu. Uh, this is just, uh.
I personally think it had quid due to COVID, it's to be, that's personal. Uh, it, it'd be a crime shame if you don't, but like Craig said, and our hands is so tied with this, because if we break any law concerning this money, we gotta pay back. And, you know, and, and, but, uh, but, you know, but, but, we've got your letter, you've turned your letter in, is that what you said? You've turned the letter in to us, to somebody's, okay, okay, okay.
He, he had, Jamie had sent it to me, and I asked him because that was a meeting that I wasn't able to be at for a day, and I asked him if it's okay if I send it via message, and I sent it to the art committee via message.
Okay, I got it, the email.
And he got it pasted.
Correct.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not, so I did not.
And I, I have read the letter, but, back to my point, I don't know how we can classify you, you don't, I don't, I'm questioning our authority, in other words.
It's open to interpretation.
That might be something we could have C task about his individual situation.
It's like, when we're talking about paying bicycle, we do, we make mistakes, but, you know, we can get an ambulance for that. You get an ambulance for the, for meaning you're doing some swimming, but that's art, right?
We're not doing that.
We didn't sign on the pool.
No.
Oh, yeah, it is, but I mean, it's, it's helping.
But that's not, the swimming pool would be art, I mean.
But maybe, Catrice, not who to ask. And see if he would be considered.
Okay, look, it's like I said, the money for the internet.
Yeah, the internet is art, man, yeah.
And maybe Catrice, somebody with C task or the Comptroller's office, what constitutes a retiree, how do you classify? What do you do to be classified as a retiree? I, I mean, you might, I'm just saying, you might know more who to ask, can I do, I have no idea.
What's turned in on the termination papers when they leave from their supervisor?
And then who would look at them, the termination papers, or the departure papers? Who, who would be authorized to look at them and make the termination where their former?
I mean, the supervisor, if that department turns it in, and I just put it in the system.
Right, but I mean, the papers you got, I might, yeah, who could look at them and declare an employee a retiree or not, do you know?
We should want to do the resolution.
Yep, I, resolution two, two, twenty-two, resolution, the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee, adopting an art premium pay plan for retired and deceased employees. Whereas, the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee, is proud of workers and the county government for their steadfast persistence in the face of personal exposure, sickness, or danger thereof during the past, past few years, whereas the legislative body of Polk County has received and is legally authorized to distribute federal American Rescue Plan monies on premium pay for employees who serve the citizens of Polk County during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Now therefore, be it resolved, Polk County Commission meeting in regular session, it's twenty-fourth day of February, twenty-twenty-two, that following premium pay be paid for work previously done and already paid under normal tax hours of work. This premium is for betterment of county employees and their family, for the employee works specifically on Polk County funds one oh one and one thirty-one. The premium pay shall affect the following, at the rate stated, Polk County workers under fund one oh one and one thirty-one at Polk County government who did serve during the lotted COVID pandemic time, as set forth by the Polk County legislative body, section B below, and have retired or who are now deceased, RS follows. Number one, in section eight, full-time workers kept at forty-five hundred, equaling rate of two twenty-five per month after bill completion of said month. Number two, part-time workers kept at two thousand, equaling rate of one hundred per month after bill completion of said month. Number two, section eight, any employee who is now deceased relating to one or two above shall have their pay dispersed to the state or individual authorized by the Polk County attorney with any dispute settled in action without a block. B, all monies included in the resolution and any amended, edited additions are held to be a one-time, non-recurring, non-employee, which is maintenance of effort. Premium amount added over regular pay for hazardous work conditions under the Chinese-based COVID-nineteen pandemic time covered from March the third, twenty-twenty, until October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Section C, it is department, board, system, and employees' responsibility for any required withholdings that may need to be made from the receipt of allocated funds. This resolution shall become effective on page, as follows, the public welfare requirement.
Motion to approve two, two, twenty-two.
Second.
Got a motion, my John, second, my Dave, to approve resolution two, two, twenty-two, any more discussion?
I have a question, because, like I told Catrice, you know, it's who turns in the paperwork that puts it through retirement on. I was with her for almost fourteen years, had to leave because my husband died, and, but, just because I was twenty days short of meeting this meeting to approve it, I don't get paid. But, and just like these guys, they don't either, so, I don't see how you can get that and put that a retiree can get it, or somebody that died when, we were there too. That's the thing, that's why I'm like, okay, yeah, you were there a month, no, you were there six months, whatever, but the whole time, and there was circumstances that you couldn't control is the reason that you left, why, why not, why can't, why, why can't we get it?
Question, Derek.
I mean, you didn't even table on it to even discuss the numbers, you just said, no, basically. I mean, I've been coming to these meetings except the month that Duane died, for, since August, August.
And the fact that nothing was done on it, I mean, for so many months, there are quite a few of us that, if it had been decided early, I mean, like you said, even twenty days earlier, it would have included, you know, the majority, well, I wouldn't say the majority, but a good number of the people that have been here fighting for this.
Well, that problem was, though, that was not our fault, because that, we couldn't get nothing from the state, giving us authorities to go ahead. We were having to research every single thing before, we was afraid to do anything. See, county had this private consultant that went, that came out and worked with them before it ever got started, they hired somebody to come in.
I understand that, but my, my point being, if your date certain ended October thirty-first, then anybody that was still employed October thirty-first should be considered. I mean, that should have been your end date, not the date that it got voted on.
Well, we brought, I mean, we brought that up and voted on.
Yeah, I, I've been here.
I'm not being rude, we're about to go with time limit, but anybody on here can bring it back up, for you to be looked at, the number, uh, what it's gonna cost, I mean, if anybody
I mean, it just doesn't seem fair that it's.
wishes to do so, we can have a, a meeting, but we have to vote on this, our time's running out, so, uh, roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal? Jeremy, uh, I'm sorry, Dewey Esman?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippen?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton? Yes, and James Witty?
I guess, we started about ten minutes late, that means we're around a few minutes over, two hour time, right?
No.
Did we say two hours or nine o'clock?
No, two hours, well, it's, it's nine o'clock.
But we started ten minutes late.
Start late, not early. I make a motion that we extend our time from that's meeting.
We've actually just got one more thing, but.
Well, you said, talk about around time.
Well, it's nine o'clock. And I made it start a little late.
It's about forty-six, nine oh four.
All right, we started ten minutes late, John won't make some other extended meeting, just one item?
Yes.
Anybody?
Second.
Ducktown courthouse.
I'm second.
Uh, Davey second, any discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Esman?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippen?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
And James Witty?
Yes.
Uh, first, is upstate on Ducktown courthouse?
I was just informed that Judge Law's left, so he's not here for business. The next thing with the courthouse of Duck County is if anybody knows a roof, would please have them contact me, I don't know him either, I've called, I've seen him twice, and both guys that have looked at it, basically said, I thought this was a, or, uh, was duty in existing roofs, and I don't wanna take this project on right now. It goes back to everybody looking at it, if you know anybody that would like to do a roof.
Can we submit the specific stuff of it?
I've not got anybody to give me any specs.
He, he's trying to get away.
The building committee, you all read up there, but there was never any specs, you all came back and said, get this, put a roof on, and I said, what was the spec? I've not been able to get a roof for it, even meet with me.
Say something major?
All the specifications, I mean, as far as trust, uh, uh, everything with a roof, I can't get, like I said, I have had two people come with me, but whenever they look at it, they're like, oh, I thought we were redoing a roof, I didn't know we was doing a new roof, I, I don't want this. And they, they left, so if anybody knows anybody, please have them contact county technical office, I can correct it quickly.
And real quick, we got. There, there's one of the resolutions. Real quick, we got one more resolution, they're recovering, loss revenue, take this one second, that'll be everything, everybody's been real patient, I appreciate it. Sorry to beat you so long, uh, it's resolution three, three, twenty-two, two, three, twenty-two, I apologize. Resolution, two, three, twenty-two, resolution of governing body of Polk County, Tennessee, capturing revenue loss using ARP money, whereas the government of Polk County, Tennessee, has identified that it has revenue loss due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, whereas the legislative body of Polk County believes that such losses are recoverable due to the final rule of American Rescue Plan rules and regulations, and whereas it is best interest of Polk County to capitalize on such revenues. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Polk County Commission meeting in regular session, it's twenty-fourth. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Polk County Commission, meeting in regular session, it's twenty-fourth day of February, twenty-twenty-two, at Copper Basin Community Center in Ducktown, Tennessee. All monies and credits on American Rescue Plan and funds are hereby incorporated as revenue loss to the county for the purpose and implementation of governmental services and personal. This resolution shall become effective on passage of public welfare requirement.
Motion to approve two, three, twenty-two.
Second.
Got a motion by John Holt, second by Jeremy, to approve resolution two, three, twenty-two.
Catrice, you still here?
Yeah.
This was a recommendation from Cephas, to give them, give them a lot of the bindings of the art section. That, that, this was a recommendation to come out with the, oh, yeah, pretty much, out of the final order of the rules.
And, let's see, all right, roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenon?
Yes.
Mark Evans? Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, real quick, we gotta address the hot water heater system at Justice Center, I think Mr. Woody's gonna have a jail committee meeting.
Yeah, I'll have to, you know, find out, work with the sheriff, find out what they, what they do.
So, we'll just, apparently so with the jail committee. All right.
Is that the one they called about, need to get repaired, uh, roofs?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I have a question. Now that the money's transferred into the general fund, does, do we still have to account for that money to the ARP fund?
Yes, there's some kind of accounting thing where that's received.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Are we keeping a, a ledger of where all that's gonna go, like a, a separate total of where it goes?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it better be.